Call the meeting water, no call.
Mr. Bishop?
Present.
Mrs. Congdon?
Present.
Mr. Jovian?
Present.
Mr. Lozal?
Present.
Dr. Page?
Excused.
Ms. Spelkwin?
Present.
Five present, one excuse.
We have a quorum. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Robert G. McKinnon Council Chamber Wednesday, June 22, Pleasurable allegiance, may all rise. Moving on to agenda item number three, public input. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the school committee? If there is nobody that wants to address the school committee, we'll move on to discussion of the minutes, May 24, 2016, a regular meeting. Any discussions? Any discussion on the minutes? If there's no discussion on the minutes, we'll move on to chairperson's announcements. I would just like to make a quick comment on graduation. I'd like to congratulate the class of 2016, but I think there's got to be a special thank you going out to Peggy Bridges, who again did a fantastic job on the musket, the yearbook for Southbridge High School. It was done in-house, and they had the personalized pages, all color photos, outstanding job, and it's done in-house. So Peggy Bridges, thank you very much, and keep up the good work. I have no other announcements at this time, so we're going to move on to new business. Agenda item number six, budget update.
Thank you Chairman Lozal. Through you to the rest of the committee, welcome everyone tonight. I just have a quick update on the FY '17 budget. I'm pleased to report, based on our conversation last time, that the budget is now balanced. We had an original anticipated deficit of about $340,000, which was closed by additional revenue from the town. I want to personally thank Chairman Carrasco and the members of the town council for their support. Ron Sanangelo, our town manager, they have been incredibly supportive of the schools this budget season, and that additional revenue is incredibly helpful. We've also been able to reclassify some expenses to the grants to help with the budget deficit. And we also were able to repurpose some existing positions that were vacant, based on student need. An example was one literacy position at the middle school and a special education position at the high school. Through some creative budgeting, we were able to service students with less positions. The final line item budget, I know the committee requested a line item budget, we're working on that. We just want to do one final pass with all of the directors and principals prior to releasing that line item budget, and that will be forthcoming. As a reminder, the total allocation for the schools this year is $26,133,400. This allocation does not include the $300,000 of capital funding that was given by the town of Southbridge. The draft budget was built to align, again, to this key priorities, four key priorities, to improve academic outcomes for students, to increase supports for ELLs, to address behavior concerns, and increasing social and emotional supports for families and students, to improve teaching and learning, and also to improve access and use of technology district-wide. To increase the supports for ELL learners, I'm really excited that we have added a director of English language learners to the district, and we've also hired, or in the process of hiring, four additional ESL teachers. An additional ESL teacher at Eastford Road. We are adding two additional ELL teachers at the middle school and an additional ELL teacher at the high school. To address concerns around social and emotional learning and supports for students and families, we've added a director of social and emotional learning. We are hiring the equivalent of four additional school-based staff to support students in social and emotional learning. And the district's hiring two additional FTEs for elementary schools to provide direct support of social and emotional programming to students. To improve teaching and learning, the district has added two positions, a humanities coordinator and a STEM coordinator, to support curriculum development, coaching, supervision, and evaluation of teachers at the middle and high school. We've expanded existing instructional resource specialists, and we have actually changed those positions to add additional assistant principals to the middle and high school, so both schools will now have two assistant principals on each side. We've also secured funding to work with teachers this summer and next year to refine and build curricula in all grades and core subject areas. And there's considerable resources that have been identified to provide ongoing professional development to staff across the district this summer and into next school year. So we're very excited about the improvements that are going to be happening in teaching and learning. And we've also been working very diligently with our new director of technology to improve access and use of technology. The district network engineer position was expanded to a director of technology position, and we're actually going to be rolling out 1,300 Chromebooks and looking to implement a one-to-one pilot at the middle school this coming year, which Mr. Parent is going to talk to us today about during his technology presentation. So that's the budget update.
Moving on to six, two, introduction of the leadership team.
So I'm really pleased and excited tonight to present the new district leadership team here in Southbridge. But before I go into the new district leadership team, I just want to recognize our principals who are here to support us tonight. We'll start with Eastford Road, Mary Scrippsak. It's great to have her here to support the introduction of the new leadership team. Kathleen Catterett, who is the principal at the West Elementary School, is here as well. Emily Mantenio, the principal at Charlton Street School, is here, as well as Rebecca Sweetman, our middle school principal. I want to thank you all for coming tonight. And without further ado, I'm really excited to introduce our new chief of learning and innovation. This position was formerly the assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction, Dr. William Marinell. Dr. Marinell is going to be the leader of the Southbridge School District Teaching and Learning Team, and he will be focusing on the overall improvement of learning outcomes for the district pre-K to 12. He has a bachelor's degree from Amherst College, master's and doctoral degrees from Harvard University's Graduate School of Education, and he's been an educator since he graduated from Amherst College. His most recent position, he was the director of analytics for the Center for Education Policy and Research at Harvard University, and he's been the recipient of a number of awards at Harvard University and has authored numerous articles for the Harvard Educational Review and educational policy. He lives in Belmont with his wife and two children, fifth grade daughter and a third grade son, and his first day is actually Monday, June 27. Dr. Marinell, would you like to say a few words?
Well, good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here. You mentioned all the things in your introduction that I was going to say in mine, so I guess I'll just add that, you know, my interest in and involvement with public education has really been something that's endured over my entire life. Both of my parents were teachers. My sister's a teacher, my wife is a reading specialist, and as Dr. Heisinga mentioned, I taught for four years, taught English for four years, both in the U.S. and abroad before beginning graduate studies. Since attaining my doctorate in education policy, leadership, and practice from Harvard, I've been involved in research. So that's been seven years of work. For the first three years, I worked at an organization called the Research Alliance for New York City Schools, which was housed at NYU and involved working in very close partnership with the New York City Public School System to evaluate the efficacy of different things they were trying and trying to help them do a better job of using evidence and research and data to make informed policy decisions. For the past four years, I've been at SEPER, the Center for Education Policy Research, which is housed at Harvard Grad School of Ed. And in that work, we've collaborated with school districts and state education agencies all around the country, mainly large urban public school districts, to pursue similar work. I'm really excited to get started in Southbridge. It's a terrific team. We have a lot to do, but I'm eager to dig in. My first day will be Monday. I'm here because I really want to help provide, you know, kind of the education that we all want your students to have. So it's a pleasure to meet you all. I look forward to working together with you folks on the school committee and with the principals and the members of the leadership team and the members of the community to really make some important changes in the coming years to provide that high-quality public education. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Marinell. All right. Our next introduction is our director of finances, human resource, and operations, Mr. Daniel Deedy. Dan is presently the school business administrator in Lemonster, Massachusetts. He also held similar positions in Auburn, Mass., and has worked in the school business administration for over 10 years. He also serves on the executive board for Massachusetts Association for School Business Officials, MASBO, and his bachelor's degree is from College of the Holy Cross and his master's degree is from Worcester State. Dan lives in Worcester, and his first day is going to be July 1. Dan, you want to say hello?
I should probably forewarn you, typically when I get to the podium, someone puts a watch up and they start timing me because I tend to carry on. It's great to be back to Southern Worcester County. I started in Auburn back in 2005, had a great experience, and moved up the corporate ladder, if you will, to a large urban district in Lemonster. I see the challenges and the opportunities that I faced in Lemonster as a great training, if you will, for the work here in Southbridge. Also, with my work in MASBO, and also with my work with USPAR. What is an USPAR? USPAR is Urban School Business Administrators Roundtable. I've chaired this group for the past two years. I started my third year as a chair, and we tackle all those incredibly difficult questions and problems in urban districts. Dave Rinalino, who's MASBO's executive director, always reminds me I've got the most important task in MASBO as we tackle those urban challenges. I could go on, we'd be hit at midnight. I don't want to do that to you the first time out. Thank you for the opportunity, for the privilege to work with you and to do great work in Southbridge.
Thank you, Dan. All right. Our next team member is Ms. Kelly Cooney, our new director of English language learner services. This is a newly created position in Southbridge, a much-needed position in Southbridge to service our English language learners. She's presently the director of English language learner programs in Fall River Public Schools. She's been in education over 15 years and has a bachelor's degree from the University of Rhode Island and master's degree from the University of Oregon and Boston College. She's relocating to this area from Newport, Rhode Island, and her first day is July 1. Kelly?
Thank you. It's a pleasure to meet you all this evening. I just want to say I'm really excited about moving to the Worcester County. I'm not going to move to Southbridge, I don't think. I'm very excited about working in Southbridge. I've been here on and off for the past couple of weeks, kind of visiting and helping out, helping to plan summer school. Very happy to report that the teachers are fabulous. They're very excited to make some changes to their teaching strategies, and they're very excited about learning about teaching English language learners. I don't know what else to tell you, other than that, I'm passionate about what I do. I'm a Head Start student myself. I've been in education my whole life, except for a short stint I did in corporate America, where I felt like I just wasn't making anything meaningful with my life, so that's when I decided to go back to B.C. and I was a member of the Donovan cohort, Donovan Scholar Cohort, to focus on urban education. So prior to Fall River Public Schools, I was in the Boston Public Schools for 12 years. So I'm very happy to be here and to work with you and to work with the principals and the teachers and the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. And I just have to say, Kelly has done an absolutely outstanding job this, you know, past few weeks, even without even being on board, helping us totally revamp summer programming. We've nearly doubled the number of students who are attending our summer programs, and she did a two-day professional development for teachers, and the feedback from our staff was just outstanding. Really thought it was of one of the highest qualities they'd been to, so thank you very much, Kelly. We also have a new director of information systems and technology, Mr. Jonathan Parent. This was a newly created position, and, you know, I've talked a lot about John. He's been in the district, he started with me on May 2. He's working on an incredible technology, infrastructure overhaul and a technology rollout that he's going to share with us in just a little bit. He was born and raised in Southbridge, a graduate of Southbridge High School in 1999, and he lives on a horse farm in North Brookfield with his wife and two daughters, and, you know, it's been just amazing to have him on board and what he's done in just a matter of seven weeks is just really mind-blowing to me, but I just want to welcome Jonathan.
Thank you for that. And must I say, it's truly a small town because I can't go anywhere without running to someone either I know or am related to. So, thank you. So I want to give you, take this time to be a little more verbose than the other people that have come up here. I want to give you an update on my six weeks in the district and what I've come across in terms of where we stand with technology.
Hey, John. We're going to come back to you for the tech update.
Oh, you're going to come back to you.
Yep.
Very much.
So hold on one second.
Thank you.
Our next introduction is Nicole Murphy, Nikki. She's our new director of social and emotional learning, a newly created position. Nicole has worked in Georgetown Public School System for the past few years, practicing psychotherapist for 20 years, working in private practice outpatient mental health, inpatient psychiatric nonprofit in public school settings. Her bachelor's degree is from Wagner College, master's degree is from New York University. Nikki lives in Haverhill with her husband, who's a high school teacher, and her daughter, who's going into fourth grade, and she started on May 9th, just the week after me. And Nikki, you want to say a couple words?
I just want to say thank you for welcoming us, and I'm very excited to speak to you tonight. I'm going to speak to you as well about what we've done so far in regards to social and emotional learning. As Jessica mentioned, I was a clinician for 20 years prior to moving into education and school administration. And my husband's a teacher, and we had started to sort of have a lot of conversations around the social and emotional needs of students, how they were kind of rising and rising. There were all these mental health issues in the schools, and people didn't know what to do and how to manage that. And I'm very passionate about emotional intelligence and social and emotional learning, so I started to say, you know, I'm a cognitive behavioral therapist by trade, and that's a very psychoeducational treatment model. And I started to say, you know, I need to get into schools and start to sort of help people, support teachers, support administration, mainly support students, to basically help them learn the skills that they're going to need, both professionally and personally, to kind of be successful in life. So I'm thrilled to be in Southbridge. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to help these students and to support the teachers and the administrators. So thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. And I think this community is going to be really impressed and blown away with what Nikki's done so far in the last seven weeks around social and emotional learning and the plans moving forward. And last but not least, the final member of our leadership team is a veteran of Southbridge, Ms. Colleen Culligan. She's been here since 2012, has worked in a variety of roles within people personnel, was with the Worcester Public Schools 15 years. Her bachelor's is from the University of California and master's degrees from Worcester State and Anna Marie College, originally from California, and she enjoys playing classical piano. I did not know that. Colleen?
So thank you. It's an honor and a privilege to be a part of the leadership team that Dr. Heisinga has assembled here. I've met all of you and those of you who are returning, the principals in particular. I look forward to the efforts and the challenges in front of us with respect to our turnaround plan, building on our strengths, and continuing to address the concerns and the questions in the community and also among all of our children, establishing the kind of equity, fairness, and excellence that we're trying to bring to Southbridge. Thank you for the opportunity to be a part of the team.
Thank you. All right. I just want to give the community an end-of-year summary. Since we were together last time, there's been a lot of events, many of you have attended. And first was the Career Fair on May 31st. We had over 80 individuals attend our Career Fair and be interviewed by our principals, and we've actually hired a few of them, so it was a great turnout for the Career Fair. We have been actively interviewing for open positions. Several teachers were hired already, and we've gotten some outstanding candidates, individuals who have been nominated as teacher of the year in their districts. We've had national board-certified teachers apply to Southbridge, and we've been able to hire them, so it's been really wonderful. The last day of school was June 15th. The high school awards night was June 1st. It was a wonderful event to celebrate the kids. Graduation was June 3rd. It was an amazing event, and thank you committee members, many of you who were there. It was wonderful to celebrate that night with you. I just want to again reiterate what Chairman Lozal said and thank advisor Peggy Bridges for her work on the yearbook. It was just an outstanding piece of work, and all of the students who contributed. The middle school awards night was outstanding. I just want to commend Principal Sweetman and her staff, who are just an outstanding awards night. And our chief of police, Shane Woodson, was our keynote, and he brought the house down. It was a wonderful, wonderful celebration of the eighth graders, and it was great to hear his story about growing up in Southbridge and, you know, just a real testament of perseverance and persistence to where he's gotten to today, and it was great. The elementary schools, career days at both elementary schools, I was blessed enough to be invited to Charlton Street to share what it's like to be a receiver, and the kids were wonderful, asked me a lot of really good questions, and I know that members of our leadership team also participated in Career Day, and it was really great. There were field days and field trips across the district. We had Step Up Day, and we also had fifth grade celebrations. I was lucky enough to walk in on Charlton Street's parade, and that was wonderful to see all of the younger kids celebrating the fifth grade graduates. It was a wonderful thing to watch. We have a lot of summer activities coming. I want to invite the public and again invite the committee members to the Turnaround Plan release this Friday. We'll have a press conference starting at 10:45 at the Charlton Street School. I just want to thank the staff for all they've done to prepare for this event. My assistant, Maureen Gullickson, has just done an amazing job organizing for the Turnaround Plan release on Friday. We're still enrolling for summer school. We've got plenty of spots. In fact, a Worcester State grant is providing summer school for all middle school students for free this year. So parents, if you're looking for summer programming for middle school students, please look to sign them up for summer school. Professional development has started and is taking place across the district. Today and yesterday, we launched our new school city assessment system and started professional development. Next week, we have math professional development going on all week, and we'll have PD going on throughout the summer. School hours during the summer is 7:30 to 2:30, and central office hours will be 7:30 to 4:30, Monday through Friday. And that's all my updates. Next on the agenda is the social and emotional learning overview and the technology overview, so I'm going to introduce Jonathan Parent once again to give us our technology update.
You sure of this time?
Yes, sir. Sorry.
So when I did Career Day at Charlton Street a couple weeks ago, I asked the kids what kind of technology they'd like to see in their classrooms, and they actually told me air conditioning. Just a little tidbit. So, thank you for that, and I'm here to go over everything I've come across in my six weeks here, accomplishments, and the plans for the future. So, several areas of concern that I've come across, looking at existing service contracts and expenditures. So I found several times where the district has bought unnecessary equipment in the past year and got into service contracts. There's been a complete lack of documentation and standardization that I would expect in an enterprise like the school district. There's completely inadequate wireless coverage, especially in the three elementary schools. The middle high school, the middle high school is a little bit better in that regard, but in the three elementary schools, it's almost nonexistent. And significant barriers have been erected that I've seen that for the children to actually access the technology, whether it's passwords on the Wi-Fi that aren't handed out, limitations on devices, so they're not used to their full capacity. Other areas of concern are the outdated classroom technology, computers that are five, six, seven years old, an outdated student information system, no learning management system, limited technology-based electives or clubs, improper server configurations, and lack of a robust district firewall and content filtering solution. So I'm going to go through all of these, line by line, because I'm sure you have questions. So in terms of unnecessary equipment and service contracts, and this is just the past year, this is all I've encountered thus far, we've spent about $60,000 between hardware and service contracts that either are incredibly superfluous, which means I'm going to end up replacing them in a couple months because they're completely inadequate, or it's a service contract that was purchased that was never used once all school year. So both of those things total up to $60,000, and I might also add, both of those things are coming from the same vendor, which is a little weird. We also, the district's also been in agreement with Microsoft to lease Microsoft software for the last five years. So for about $26,000 a year, we've been leasing software that we could have probably purchased for about $40,000. So we spent about $110,000, $120,000 over the last five years for software that we could have purchased outright. My first week of the job was spent breaking into most of the equipment. Network diagrams were incomplete, passwords were not documented, and the naming conventions between wireless networks between building to building was just not consistent. People would have a hard time going from the middle school to the high school side. They'd have a hard time going from the high school to an elementary school and being able to get on the wireless. I talked about the wireless coverage. There's no self-sufficient guest wireless network, which is fairly embarrassing for when we have guests, when we have professional development, that we have to, that administrators have to scramble to find a technician in the building or call a technician to come down just to go through the process of getting someone on the wireless network. I talked about this before, where there's severe web content blocking. Children is not allowed, and staff are not allowed, to get to certain websites they should be able to get to. They're not allowed to instantly override the ability to get to blocked websites that they need to get to in the middle of a class. And then, like I said, there's no standard way for students and staff to access the wireless network across all buildings. In terms of outdated classroom technology, there are no laptop carts available at any of the three elementary schools. There's only one computer lab per elementary school, that's about 25 computers per school, and the 15 laptop carts we do have at the middle high school are beyond their useful lifespan. Most of them are in various states of decay. Our student information system is currently iPass. It lacks advanced data storage and reporting features. When, what I mean by that is it can't store any custom fields, do any custom reporting, and it doesn't integrate with any of our other district systems. There's no digital learning management system, and a learning management system is just an online-based extension of the classroom. It allows for anywhere, anytime learning to happen, and it doesn't exist in any fashion right now. There are also limited tech-related electives and clubs, so examples of such electives would be computer programming, robotics, CAD drawing, and tech fabrication. Improper server configurations, so significant money has been spent on backend server hardware. We have complete excess capacity in terms of server hardware in the schools. Not enough money has been spent in the classroom itself. And even though we have a lot of backend server hardware, it's misconfigured. We don't have a lot, we don't have the redundancy I would expect. In terms of security, firewall and content filtering, our firewall lacks what's called the next-generation platform to block such critical threats such as CryptoLocker, where files are held hostage for ransom, basically. And we also lack an enterprise-level content filtering solution, so it's almost impossible right now to run a report on one specific child to see what websites they're going to, to be warned if a student's searching for suicide or problems they're having at home or if they're being bullied. So there are obviously some strengths. We have a very modern middle high school. It's a new building. It has significant amounts of technology that's been invested in it. It's a wonderful foundation to start with. The internet connection between the buildings is a fiber connection, and it's actually one of the better connections I've seen in districts, and we have a huge internet connection out to the world. It's just that nobody's using it. So accomplishments so far in my six weeks. So the network has been documented district-wide, which may not seem like a big deal, but when it comes down to a crisis or we're in the middle of testing and something can't, something's not working, it's critical information. When I started, there was no semblance of a wireless network at the central office. That's been rectified. We've also added a guest Wi-Fi network at the middle high school and the central office. We've also added a guest wifi network at the middle high school and the central office. Um, we've audited all existing classroom computer technology. Um, we've, there were significant network issues plaguing, um, the entire district, um, from end of April to early May, about a few weeks before I started. Um, people were telling me things were happening, that connections were being limited out to the internet. All that's been fixed. Um, I've secured, uh, funding for 85 new enterprise access points for the summer that are going to be installed. So that's about $95,000 worth of equipment that we're getting reimbursed, um, by the federal government through the E-rate program. So we're getting about 85% of that reimbursed. In progress goals, um, I'm currently designing a new district website, which I hope to be able to show you guys by the end of the month. Um, that'll save us significant money in terms of recurring yearly website hosting costs. Currently we spend about $10,000 a year, um, hosting our district website. And if you've been to it, you understand that it's not a great website. Um, so I'm trying to make it more streamlined, make it more user-friendly, um, and it's going to cut the costs down to about $500 a year. Um, I'm also looking to expand our digital offerings of forms, uh, making it more user, user-friendly. Um, we're in the process of selecting a new student information system, selecting a new learning management system. This summer we're going to be adding, like I said, um, actually adding 105 wireless access points, 85 for the three elementary schools, um, and then another 25 for the, uh, 20, 25 for the middle high school. We're going to standardize all the wireless networks so that you can go from building to building to building and not have to ask the secretary, bug them, bug someone to get online. We're going to replace the existing network firewall with next generation firewall hardware. And we're going to end our Microsoft subscription and we're just going to purchase the licensing we need outright so, so we can break the cycle of constantly subscribing to this licensing perpetually. Other in-progress goals, um, we're auditing all the printing and copying capacities and costs of the district to see if we can save any money in terms of copy leases, um, see where the printing, see where printing is happening the most, see what, see if it makes sense to, um, add or remove certain pieces of equipment to get the, the price per page down. Um, we're also going to, uh, rebuild all of student and staff user accounts to make it a more sensible format. Right now, because of over the years and the, and the turnover, um, there's been no standard naming convention for anything. So we're really starting from the ground up. Um, I'm also developing a five-year district turnaround plan, um, that's going to be a living document. It's going to be constantly updated with, um, technology, with the way technology changes from day to day and year to year. Some of the larger, um, in-progress goals I have going on for me is we're going to be migrating our email platform from Office 365 to Google Apps for Education. And we're also going to make a, a significant investment on Google Chrome devices district-wide. So, um, why Chrome devices? Um, well, because they're made for education. The actual, um, Google Apps for Education platform is free, as is the Office one we currently have. Um, the benefits are, there is a basic LMS built into Google Apps. Uh, we have unlimited space, staff, each staff member will have and student will have unlimited space for, um, file and email storage. It comes with those app, those applications we normally would be purchasing like Microsoft Word, Microsoft Excel, PowerPoint. They're all free with Google Apps. Um, the devices themselves are very simple and inexpensive. They have fast, very fast boot times. Um, one thing I noticed, um, in my first week here, walking around, looking at kids who are using the existing laptops, they could spend 15, 20 minutes trying to find a laptop that works and be, for, for class. And that's eating into class time. So we're trying to avoid that. Um, also these laptops would have all-day battery life. Um, eight hours would not be a problem. So we don't have to constantly be ripping cords out and moving things around. So, my end of summer goal is 1,300 Chrome, Chrome devices district-wide this summer. So this is going to replace the majority of, um, the aging computer classroom equipment, existing laptop carts in the middle high school. And the way this is broken down is 1,150 of those will be student devices, 100 devices at Eastford Road, 150 devices at Charlton Street School, 150 devices at West Street School, 370 devices at the middle school, 200 at Southbridge High, and 175, 170 devices for a sixth grade one-to-one pilot. What that means is every student in the sixth grade will have a laptop. Um, they'll have a laptop they'll carry from class to class. They will not be allowed to take it home. Um, we have some logistics we have to work out with that in terms of the availability of high-speed internet, um, at home. But as, as of right now, um, all sixth grade teachers are on board and we're very excited about this. We also need to get a device into every educator's hands. They need to know how to use the device. Um, they need to take their time. They need to be able to take it home. They need to be able to start learning and they're never going to learn, they're not going to learn any faster than if we give them a device. So the plan is to give them each, each teacher, paraprofessional and, um, building administrators too, if they would like one, a device to learn it. Okay. Long-term goals. This is my organization chart. This is my tech department. Everything in blue is a position I have currently at my disposal, including myself. Right now, I am short all tech integration teachers. I'm short a help desk manager slash network administrator, which means I'm fulfilling all of those roles. Um, so I've been declared the most hands-on tech director most people have ever seen, uh, which is great. It's not sustainable whatsoever. These positions need to be filled and, um, our hope is once, um, people decide that, that Southbridge is the choice for them for school, that, um, you know, the budget will allow these positions. But as of right now, I'm happy to, happy to take on the brunt of this. Uh, other long-term goals of the tech department. I see our, our main goal as providing students with 21st century college and career tech skills. We're going to make sure that students are prepared for whatever they do when they leave our doors. Increased access to technology in the classroom. We want, we're focusing on laptops, Chromebooks because they're easy to use, but laptops because we want to, want to separate the computer from the furniture. We want to make it so a kid can take a laptop, they can go sit with a couple of friends on this side of the classroom. They're not tied to just desks after, you know, they, they can move around. Learning can be, learning can be fun. We want to inspire students and staff to use technology in innovative ways. We want to provide staff with the support they need on a regular basis. And finally, which is very exciting, is we want to be a model of success, successful educational technology usage for this area. Um, I don't know of any other school district in this area that's doing, um, a one-to-one program, never mind a one-to-one pilot, um, that's adopt, that has adopted, um, that's going to adopt Google Chromebooks in this way. Uh, my hope is one day, very soon, that we're going to have districts and surrounding towns come to us and see what we're doing that's, that's finally innovative for a change. That's it.
Are there any questions by committee? Mr. Jobin?
Thank you, Mr. Lazo. Well, uh, thank you, Mr. Parent for that, uh, presentation. I think, uh, you, you've touched on a lot of key points and, uh, to have that technology plan is something that has been lacking for a number of years. We did have one several years ago. But as you commented, it's a live and breathing document that you can't just be stuck of, this is our plan, implement it and then not think about it again. So, uh, I like your ambitious goals, um, to get technology into the hands of students. Kids today need that. That's a new way of learning. Uh, several years ago, I attended a conference at the MASC and it was all about 21st century learning, that the old ways of teaching for, for kids of, of now, you need that technology. So thank you for your presentation. Hopefully the town will see the need as well. I'm sure they will. They came through before with, with a huge amount of money and it's always about the presentation and documentation and, and from what I've seen tonight, as long as you stay on that course with, uh, Dr. Hizinga, uh, I think you will get to that goal. So, thank you for that.
Any other questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to six, five, social emotional learning oversight. I'm superintendent.
Hi, I just want to reintroduce Nikki Murphy, our Director of Social and Emotional Learning, and she's going to talk, uh, very similar to Mr. Parent about some of the things she's learned about the districts, um, some of the initiatives moving forward, um, and, uh, some of the hopes and dreams that we have for the Southbridge Public Schools. Ms. Murphy?
Thank you. Okay, so, um, I've been here six weeks, so, um, with my shrink hat on, I've been doing a lot of listening, um, and have learned quite a bit in the short amount of time that I've been here. The first thing that, that I did was to conduct a strengths and needs assessment and, um, I did this through, um, school visits, meetings with parents, staff, administration, um, and community agencies that have worked closely with the Southbridge Public Schools. Um, in addition, I reviewed some documents from both the union, from the local stakeholders groups, and essentially I was looking for sort of patterns and themes and, and trying to sort of figure out what the needs and challenges were for the district and also identifying sort of the, the best practices, SEL best practices that might already be in place in the district. Um, some, some big areas of concerns that I've seen so far, um, first and foremost, a lack of sort of clinical expertise in staffing. We're staffed with a lot of guidance counselors and they have their own area of expertise, but there weren't a lot of clinicians in the schools. Um, and with the high social emotional needs, um, in the district of the students, it's important to have clinicians. A lack of professional development for teachers, administration, um, around all things SEL. A lack of tier-three SEL programming and by that I mean, there are some tier-three programs. The tier-three programs are the programs that address, um, and work with students that have mental health disorders. Um, it's not that we don't have them, but we don't have highly structured therapeutic programs with a clinician attached to the program. We don't have some, some really great policies around entrance and exit criteria, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a lot of kind of work to do around the tier-three programming. Most significant, I think, that, that's, that I'm the most concerned with and I think where we're going to get the most bang for our buck is, is in the area of, of kind of the broken relationships. And by that, I mean, um, there's a lot of issues in the relationships between the community and the school, um, between staff and administration, between students and teachers. Um, this is not news to anybody. This was all kind of part of the, the stakeholders reports and, um, so there's a lot of work to do there. Um, not that there aren't some great teachers and great administrators and, and great people trying to do a lot of good work, um, but I just think there's a lot that needs to happen there, a lot of sort of healing that needs to happen. Um, suspensions and office discipline referrals, very high, um, specifically just breaking it down a little bit more, we did see that with, um, the Hispanic population and with special education, but across the board, um, there's definitely been, um, kind of a response to, I see it as a response to, um, behavioral health, not knowing how to kind of manage or deal with, um, behavioral health and not having effective programming in place or proper clinical support staff, that, um, it seems like suspension is kind of a, the fallback for how to manage, um, kind of behavioral health issues because people just don't understand kind of what else to do. And then a lack of cultural proficiency, I think, is also an issue in the district. So, you know, just briefly, some individual factors that sort of place Southbridge youth at risk and, and this is not really news to anybody, I'm sure. There's, you know, there's issues with impulsivity and emotional dysregulation. There's some, some pretty significant trauma histories. The relationships that I mentioned are issues, substance abuse, addiction, poverty, you know. And then some sort of school-specific environmental factors that are placing Southbridge youth at risk. There's a lot of academic frustration and I think some of that has to do with not, um, identifying early enough kids that do have, um, either social emotional issues and/or learning disabilities with some kids and so, um, and I think the ELL issue is another issue here that plays into sort of their academic frustration. There's some bullying issues. There's some gangs. Um, I have not seen evidence of that, but I've been told by multiple people that, that that is an issue in the town, um, with the schools. There's been some poor adult role modeling. There's definitely some issues around social emotional learning that needs to happen with staff and administration. Um, and again, it's not about finger pointing. It's more just about sort of helping them understand and build the skillsets they need in order to be able to, to properly support the students. Some harsh discipline, suspension, which I mentioned, and some really kind of, I've been in the schools every single day since I've been here, in all of the schools, on varying days. Pretty chaotic kind of classrooms and transitions and, um, some issues there. Um, so basically, you know, what are our needs? I mean, we want to build up some protective factors, obviously, while trying to reduce or eliminate the risk factors, um, that I just mentioned. And, and the way to do that really is to build the staff, school and system, you know, social emotional learning proficiency and, and capacity. Um, and we have to, in doing that, remember sort of the importance of a few things. I mean, it's really important, in my opinion, to take a student-centered and family-driven approach, to be culturally competent, to address those sort of disparities so that we can really help students not just be on track, but, but thrive. And so what are some of those common protective factors that we want to, to look at? Well, we need to build the social emotional competency and capacity. Um, we need to build strong and supportive relationships with staff and administration, with families, with the community. We do, need to create really nurturing, um, environments in the school systems. Um, and we need to obviously provide some more comprehensive mental health, um, services that include wraparound services. So this is just, I'm not going to go through every piece of this, but, you know, when you think of sort of, you know, a tiered systems of support, I'm looking at it in four kind of main areas. Social emotional learning, mental health services, um, positive behavioral interventions and supports and restorative justice. And I'm going to speak a little bit about what each of those are, um, because I know there's a lot of acronyms when we, when we talk about social emotional learning. But essentially what you're doing is, is you're looking at working at three levels. So this is a sort of the framework we use. Now, the, the school system adopted PBIS, Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, as a framework. It's not a curriculum. It's a framework to create a positive culture and climate, adopted several years ago. Um, there's been issues with rollout, with implementation, with professional development and even some, some buy-in issues with staff in certain schools. So, but if you think about it, you look at, you know, 80% of your kids fall here in the universal tier one. Um, and so the types of things that we do here to build this sort of school-wide foundation for kids of SEL supports is, we do the social emotional learning curriculum. We are trying to create this positive, you know, approach to discipline. That's what restorative justice is and I'll speak to you in a little bit more detail about that in a minute. Personnelized instruction, cultural competence, and we really want to engage families at that level. Um, here at tier two is usually, um, what we call targeted, the targeted, um, tier two. And this is usually about 15% of students and they require more intensive supports. Um, they need, you know, to, to basically, we need, we need to put sports in place that are going to address kind of risk factors and build on those protective factors. Um, and then here at the top, tier three, usually about 5% of, um, your students. And this is where we provide the really intensive supports. These do tend to be kids often that are on IEPs or 504s, not always. Um, but here we're doing really sort of sustained, culturally competent, really individualized treatment for this, this, um, portion of students. And I think the, the important thing to understand about PBIS again, because it's going to sound like I'm throwing a lot of initiatives at you, but again, these are things the school district already adopted, but it's just more about the rollout and the implementation that, that hasn't occurred properly, which is why I think we haven't met the success rate that we would like to have met. But the important thing to kind of understand is that with PBIS, it, it really behavior and discipline referrals are sort of the main metrics that we look at. Um, and, and really positive interventions are sort of built into like the DNA of PBIS. So when we look at restorative practices, um, restorative practices, this is a traditional, we look at traditional discipline, right? Which is, in, in Southbridge, we have pretty high ISS and OSS numbers. That came out in kind of the reports that, that we read. Um, so again, a lot of that has to do often with, we don't know what to do, there's kids acting out, we're not sure what to do, they're, they're breaking a rule in the student handbook, so, so what do we do? We discipline them, whether it's a detention, a suspension. Meanwhile, they lose time on learning and also often we're not really getting at the root of the problem. So restorative justice and restorative practices is, is sort of a different model that schools are adopting all around the state, all around the country. Um, and essentially what it does is it focuses on really relationships first and rules second. And it basically allows for sort of a fair process as it brings all the stakeholders to the table to have the conversation. So, for example, if a child breaks a rule, um, in the traditional, in the student handbook, it might say, okay, so let's give them a detention. Instead of doing that, which doesn't really give the victim a voice or the offender a voice, you bring them together and in a restorative model, you sit as the disciplinarian, which is usually the assistant principal, but you can have a clinician there as well. And you, you basically allow both parties to express sort of what happened and then it's a teachable moment. It isn't just, well, go throw them in, in ISS for a while, they learn nothing and then they go back, they haven't been taught any skills and now they're just going to go do the same behavior all over again. It allows for basically, you know, restoration to occur. Um, and it really does, it takes a collaborative problem-solving approach and it really does give this, the student sort of an enhanced sense of personal responsibility, but really out of that comes a strategic plan created in order for the student who did the harm to now repair the harm to the community. And then the social emotional learning curriculum, um, the, the school district adopted, um, a Castle Select Evidence-Based Program called Positive Action. Um, and we adopted it just this past year, um, obviously prior to my coming. And again, same And again, same issues with implementation, with rollout, with professional development, so it has not been implemented at the level that it needs to be. I think Eastford Road has done a great job at doing the rollout of this program. I've been over and been in the classrooms and seen some teachers teaching this curriculum, and they've done a great job. Not to say anything negative about the other schools, it's just that at Eastford Road, I know they've had some success here, and so I think it's kind of a model for some of the other schools to go down and take a look and say, all right, this is what it looks like when it's working really well. But essentially, to understand about social-emotional learning curriculums, you're basically trying to build competency in five core areas, and this is across the board, no matter what social-emotional learning curriculum you pick. You want to create self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. And there's extensive, extensive research that's been done for decades, that social-emotional skills, you know, acquiring these skills are essentially, you know, a necessity for children to be successful and adults to be successful, you know, both personally and professionally in their lives. So it's kind of the, it's a no-brainer to me, but again, I'm a therapist, so of course I think it's a no-brainer. But just some simple distinctions. Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports is about preventing adults from doing stupid things. Social-emotional learning is about giving students the skills when they're confronted by adults and students doing stupid things. And restorative justice helps adults and students build and maintain and including community after stupid things are done. I'm not being wise, that really is like a way to look at it. I mean, you know, they need to learn the skills, and we need to, we're all going to make mistakes, we all do, I make them every day, right, we all do, and so when we do, we need to actually try to fix it. And these are sort of really strong therapeutic, evidence-based approaches to help create a climate and culture where students are going to feel included, safe, where we're going to be able to bring families back into the school, and sort of build the community that we want to have in Southbridge. So, district-wide, some recent achievements, and again, we had a short amount of time, there's a lot that's been done already in six weeks, but I'm just trying to give you a quick overview. We've developed a shared vision aligned with the district and state priorities. We've got district and school leadership committed to school-wide SEL programming. We've conducted this needs and resources assessment, really looked at, you know, the adult school and system capacity, working on the cultural and linguistic competencies still, selected these evidence-based programming and strategies for implementation, and we're in the process still of really developing the SEL action plan. And then, in terms of sort of the future, what we want to be doing, what we need to be doing, some of this, we've already got started, and I'm going to tell you some specific actions that we've taken, but in terms of goals, providing ongoing professional development support, that's going to be huge. It's the number-one thing, because I believe that the teachers and the administrators, if they are trained and they understand what a trauma-sensitive classroom looks like, what a kid with PTSD looks like when they're acting out and punching a wall, you might call them behavioral, but if you know they have PTSD, you know that that's how PTSD kids sometimes act, and that doesn't mean they need a suspension, they need some skills, and they need some support essentially, and they need some treatment. Integrating school-wide family and community programming and this three-tiered approach to student support, we're aligning it all with the community-school model and the turnaround plan, of course. Really focusing again on the culturally and linguistically competent, student-centered approaches, super important. And then, of course, we're going to be monitoring and evaluating the practices and impact for continuous improvement. So what does that actually look like in terms of what we've done so far? Those are the goals, here are sort of the strategies and actions that we've taken. So far, and we've done a lot more than this, but I just wanted to highlight a few things. We've trained some building-level administration on things like restraints, on 51As, how to file, on anti-bullying, on Chapter 222, discipline laws. We've done, we took a team, Ms. Sweetman, the middle school principal, and several of her staff, to Suffolk University to do training on how to become restorative justice facilitators. We are looking at the child study team and looking at how we can sort of revamp that. So in my social-emotional learning department will be all the counselors, the clinicians, guidance staff, school psychologists, et cetera. And we have a child study team in place, but what we want to do is use that time a little bit more strategically, and essentially use our internal resources to have them help provide some of the professional development. There's cost savings, but we're going to have all these new clinicians that we're hiring, and so those people are really well-versed in all things mental health, including myself, I'll be doing a lot of the training as well to the district. And so we're putting together this sort of PD plan for all the staff and making sure it's differentiated. I'm sitting on the town council on substance abuse, that's one of the ways that I'm working with the community to address kind of some substance abuse issues that the town manager has highlighted are important. I've done an assessment of all of the student-based support teams in all the schools, and now am working with those team members to sort of create improvements, to make that process run a lot more smoothly. We've got a partnership with NAMI, which is the National, Kathleen loves this. Kathleen Catterett is the person who pointed me in this direction, so thank you, Kathleen. NAMI is the National Alliance for the Mentally Ill, and they have a mental health training called Educate the Educators, and it's free for us. So they're willing to come to our school and do some of that mental health training. There are two partnerships that I'm working on right now. One is with the Community College and Bay Path, so that's a grant. And what we're doing is, it will start next year, it'll run from January to May, and we get to choose 10 seniors from our school, and they get to be a part of, they will still graduate with a high school diploma from Southbridge, but if they take part in this program, which from January to May or June, is three days a week, 2:30 to 5:30 approximately, they have an option of getting a dual certification in one of two areas, either machine or culinary. And in addition to that, because of the partnership where we brought the Community College into this grant, they will also get some Community College credits. So that way, when they leave Southbridge, they're going to get to walk out, fully certified to walk into any number of machine shops that are in this area, ready to work, but also with some Community College credits. So we're not tracking them to say, you know, this is where you're going. Here, they got some Community College credits, now if they want to say, work during the day and make a decent salary, but then also do some Community College at night, they have that option as well, as opposed to coming out of school, as we know a lot of kids do. They don't have any training or certification, they work at CVS and try to go to Community College, and then they drop out, because they don't have the money to do both. So that's a program that we're really excited about, that will start next year. The other partnership we have is with MassEdCo, and they're going to help us in a really, I think, substantial way to improve the high school guidance department practices and staffing. So they do any number of things. First of all, they're going to give us a guidance counselor for free, four to five days a week to work in the high school. So no cost to the district, this is through the grant that we're doing. They can do college workshops for students, they're going to help them write FAFSA forms, they're going to help with the college enrollment process, they're going to help do career assessments, they're going to meet individually with kids, they provide busing to schools that do PSATs and SATs to help with that, including they even feed them, because they feel bad. They'd get to stop at Dunkin' Donuts, she told me, and she's like, we pick up food for them and make sure they've got a full stomach before they take the test. They help them register for the Common App. I mean, all things basically high school guidance, and they meet, again, with the families and everybody. And they can even train some of our guidance staff as well on things that, you know, maybe they need some support with, so we're excited about that. Some things I'm working on now and into the future, right now, I'm in the process of hiring six new clinicians, as I mentioned. I've got actually seven now, a BCBA as well. So I've hired four of the seven positions already, excellent clinicians. We are working with Harrington Hospital to create a school-based health clinic/family resource center. Now, this is pretty comprehensive. We're looking to do things like allow vaccinations to occur there, have somebody there who's going to help families sign up for mass health if they need it, connect them to community resources if they need any kind of supports in the community. And, you know, it's a way to sort of connect them to wraparound. We're going to do telemedicine with Harrington Hospital, so for example, if there's a student who has, sees a clinician from Harrington Hospital who comes into the school, okay, because we have clinicians from Harrington Hospital and UINC who come into the school and provide services for kids. So say that kid sees their clinician on a Tuesday, and then on Wednesday, something happens and they really need to see their clinician, but their clinician is not in the building. Now, we're going to have the capacity through iPads too, and it'll be housed hopefully in this school-based health clinic, that's the idea, to connect immediately with that clinician. And within an hour or two, you know, it won't be immediately, because the clinician might be in a session with someone else, they can hook up with us, and that student can now sit and have a conversation with their clinician through telemedicine. And we're even going to be able to access psychiatrists as well, in case there are med questions and that kind of stuff. So that's something that's, I think, pretty exciting, and we've even discussed potentially, it's on the table, because we do have some kids that have children themselves, you know, potentially providing some kind of daycare option, because that's been a barrier for some kids to not come back to school after they have children. So that's just a lot of ideas that we're kind of talking about. We want to get a lot of community input on that as well. And then, choosing a data management system, we need to choose a universal mental health screening tool. We're creating a district social-emotional learning team to sort of oversee all of this. Expanding the therapeutic Tier 3 programs, like I talked about, we want to incorporate meditation and yoga into gym classes. I mean, this is sort of looking at educating the whole child and holistic health in general. And there's a ton of research also about districts and school systems that have implemented meditation, and this is not in a religious way in any way, this is just a coping skill, a calming tool. And it's been very successful in really large urban districts as well, in decreasing ODRs, in decreasing suspensions, in decreasing violence and bullying, et cetera. We want to create a counseling newsletter for parents, and that would function in many ways. It could be to let parents know what's going on in the community that could support their child around mental health issues, but it also could be just informational in general, give some sort of parenting tips and all that kind of stuff, and a way to engage parents. And then, I also want to create a district sort of SEL handbook with policies and programming for the entire district, so that everybody has sort of a clinical guidebook on hand as a reference tool. And then the last thing I'm going to talk about is just creating this alternative middle-high school program. And first and foremost, what we want to do here is, we want to create a community planning group. And I'm going to start sort of working with some of my community partnerships that I've started to develop in reaching out to getting parents involved in this process, because I think it's really important that we address the fact that we do have some programming in the school, but it's not addressing all of the needs for all the students, because the needs are so high. And this would really be focused on helping kids who are at risk for dropout. We even like to try to bring back kids who have dropped out recently and see if we could engage them in this type of program. It would be highly structured, it would be therapeutic, it would be personalized learning, and it would allow us to basically support kids who have not felt that their needs have been met in the general education setting, and provide them with an opportunity to not drop out, to graduate, and to move on. And some of those kids would also, of course, have the opportunity to do this Bay Path, QuinSig Community College program as well. So, I think that's, yep, that's it.
Are there any questions, my committee?
I would have a ton of questions. I'll take them offline.
Thank you very much.
Okay, great, thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, no question, I just had more of a comment. Through you, thank you. I'm just excited that this position was created. I just believe that this will go a long way in breaking down the barriers for so many of the students in our community who can't learn because of their social-emotional learning issues. So I'm very excited to have everyone here, but I've talked about this for many years, and I'm just excited that a lot of the students in our community will be able to finally learn, because the barriers will be broken down. And in the long run, I just think this is going to make a huge difference for our community as a whole, so, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next agenda item. Six-six, determine next regularly-scheduled school committee date, the 12th reorganization, I think. What's that? Yeah. And they usually have it at the beginning part of the month, so they can reorganize. And the fourth is, you know, the other date is the fifth, which is after the 4th of July. So is the 12th okay with everybody as far as making that?
Only the three of us.
That's right. We've set it for the 12th, 7:00 PM Council Chamber. Members' forum, agenda item number seven. Are there any members that have any comments or updates? Jill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank, this is my last school committee meeting, so I just wanted to thank all of my family for allowing me many nights away in the past three years. I also wanted to thank my friends who helped support me, and everyone in town that also supported me. I want to thank the district staff, and most importantly, those of you that have truly made a difference in each student's lives. You really have such an important job. This definitely was a very long three years. I have to say, though, that the past couple of meetings that I've attended have been very positive, and I've enjoyed finally coming to meetings and actually hearing positive things that will help all of the children of our community. So I just want to thank everybody and welcome you for joining the fight for all the students of Southbridge. I learned a lot while trying to make this a better district for the children of our community, and I wish Dr. Heisinger, the fellow members of my school committee, and all of the team, the best in making this a school district with a main focus of student-centered learning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am?
Thank you for your service, Jill. You've been an inspiration to me. So, school committee members, as you saw at the beginning of the meeting, well, for those of you who weren't at our last meeting, we did have a conversation about the upcoming ballot initiative concerning lifting the cap on charter schools, and we, as a committee, decided to come up with a letter. And for the public, I was hoping I could read that letter, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. Okay. And then, if we have any changes, I can maybe bring it to the next meeting, or if it's okay, we can just sign it as it is. So, I'll go ahead and read the letter. Okay, "To whom it may concern, as the statewide ballot, uh, I'm so sorry, as the statewide debate over the expansion of charter schools continues and November's ballot question to lift the existing cap on charter schools looms, it's important to consider the impact of charter schools on Southbridge. This year alone, charter schools will siphon off more than $400 million in funds that would otherwise stay in our local school districts and be used to improve learning for all students. If the charter school expansion ballot question passes, this number could grow to millions of dollars a year in Southbridge, as it has in many communities around the state. For students, this funding loss means larger class sizes, fewer enrichment courses such as music, art, and athletics, and other damaging cutbacks. A recent report by a school budget review commission found that Massachusetts is underfunding public education by at least $1 billion per year. The ability of our schools to provide students with more opportunities for science, technology, engineering, and math STEM education, and enrichment programs such as music, art, and athletics, is already threatened. And now, charter schools are taking more than $400 million in funds each year from Massachusetts school districts. Numerous studies have shown that early education is the most effective way to ensure a child's success later in life, but only 38% of 3- and 4-year-old children in Southbridge are enrolled in an early education program. Statewide, Massachusetts has over 16,000 children on waiting lists for preschool programs. At the very least, we should provide access to preschool and early learning programs for every child, instead of giving money to more unaccountable charter schools. Part of the problem is that the state approves charter schools even when the communities where they will be located are opposed to them. This has happened in Brockton, Gloucester, and many other communities. Charter schools are not accountable to the local taxpayers who have to pay for them or the communities that they serve. That's wrong. Parents and taxpayers in Southbridge should have the final say on what kind of schools we want. Clearly, some of our public schools are struggling, particularly in our urban areas. We should be committed to fixing them, not taking money away and giving it to charters which accept fewer English-language learners and kids with significant special needs. Expanding a two-track system of separate and unequal schools where students with the most challenges remain in local schools, local district schools, with fewer and fewer resources, is not consistent with our Massachusetts values. The ballot question will allow charters to expand into areas where they don't exist right now, anywhere in the state, taking millions away from successful neighborhood public schools and causing the elimination of programs, increases in class sizes, and other damaging cuts to the schools that most families choose. In Southbridge, allowing charter schools to take more money away from our public school system will only hurt the majority of students. We need to fully fund our public school system before we consider spending more money on charter schools."
Thank you. Any other discussion under Members' Forum? Mr. Jovan?
First off, I'd like to thank Ms. Condon for her service on the Southbridge School Committee. I know that it's been a difficult three years for you, but thank you for everything that you've done over the last three years. It's been a pleasure working with you over this It's been a pleasure working with you over this last year of the school committee. This is also my last school committee meeting, as I sought not to seek a post next year. And the reason really was not because of any thought of the receivership or the ability of the school committee to move forward, it was for personal decisions due to career choices that I have over the next several months. That took me away from the last school committee meetings for the last four months, that I wasn't able to be here on Tuesday nights because of that course. However, I am committed to the Suffolk School District and fully support Dr. Heisinger because in the short amount of time that I've seen you here in the district, I've seen a lot of the coming-together of the district. And what I saw tonight was truly the emphasis on team. And team was something that I know I strive for in my career on the school committee, serving 11 years for this town with the lapse of three years and serving as chairman for seven, that we always stressed the team approach. And to hear that was very refreshing this evening. I'm also grateful that the three elementary school principals and the middle school principal are returning, because truly what Southbridge needs is the stability in the school district, and that sorely has been missed. My challenge to new administrators, I've heard a lot of great things tonight, my challenge to you is that you stay the course here in Southbridge and don't continue the ever-ending circle of people coming and going. You all bring, from what I've seen so far, a tremendous amount of talent to the district, and stability again is what is needed in this district. So thank you for coming to this district and being part of the turnaround plan. I look forward to meeting on Friday and hearing the turnaround plan. I want to make myself available to, to you, Dr. Heisinger, and the school committee as a resource, because I think what happens often is that once school committee members leave, nobody seeks out any questions as to why certain things were done. And I think that there's a valuable insight into some of those decisions. To the graduates of Southbridge High School, I was very impressed with the graduation. I was truly impressed by the president of that class, who stood up and cheered almost every single kid of his classmates that graduated. That was quite, quite the sense of accomplishment for that class. The one hope that I have going forward is that we don't hear any more classes talk about how disruptive their education has been because of the changes in the school system. I've heard that too many times over the last four years, and hopefully with this new leadership team, that has stopped and kids can just talk about how great their education has been and will be. I know throughout the years that we've had a tremendous amount of teachers in our school district that have made a difference in many people's lives, as well as principals. Couple of the teachers that, one teacher in particular is sitting out in the audience right now, is a principal, happy to see her here. I know my kids succeeded very well in the Suffolk School District. And I know and I hope that the teachers that are being hired will model some of the behaviors of, of the teachers unfortunately that we have lost because of this disruption in the school system. Just a little story, you know, I always talk about how proud I am of every kid in the school district. My wife is a bus driver, she talks about all the kids on her bus, she treats them like their own. We truly care about all kids. Mr. Bishop was the principal at the high school when my kids were there, and he did a tremendous job, and I thank you for that, Mr. Bishop. I don't think I've ever said that publicly, but I do appreciate everything that you've done. Mr. Bishop hired several teachers when he took over as principal of the high school, and I hope the new teachers that come aboard have the same passion that you were able to find. And the reason I say this is my son graduated from Providence College this past May, and during that college commencement, he texted a photo to my wife and I, as we're sitting in the box up there at the dunk center. And that picture was a picture of Mr. Kalman. Mr. Kalman was a math teacher for the Suffolk Public Schools that was hired by Mr. Bishop, that cared about the kids, that was a tremendous role model, and left because of disruption, and we lost many, many great teachers. But that picture that my son texted to me was a picture of his math calculus teacher graduating on the same day as my son. Mr. Kalman graduating with his master's degree, and my son graduating Magnum Quinati from Providence College, a graduate of Southbridge High School. So our kids can succeed. But what made it truly special was that Mr. Kalman was one that challenged his students and my son to seek better things, and challenged my son to apply to Providence College because that was his alma mater. And not only my son, but I've seen a, a number of students that have come through the system that were challenged by those teachers and have succeeded. And because this is my last meeting, and thank you for allowing me to talk about that, but we do have a tremendous amount of talent in the Suffolk School System. I look forward to this turnaround, and I just hope that this isn't just, you know, three years and quickly out the door we go, that this is a long, sustained process. So thank you for your time. Thank you.
Any other, any other discussion by committee members? Mr. Bishop?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I would just like to thank the two outgoing members. I've known them both for a number of years. Mrs. Condon used to be Ms. Lavigne when she was my student, four or five years ago. And, and Mr. Jovan I knew in many capacities, and I did have his, his children in school, and I had the opportunity to work for him as a building administrator when he was the chairman of the school committee. Always professional, always looking out for the one thing we all care about most, the students. Wish you both, both the very best of luck, and if there's anything we can do, please reach out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. I'd like to take a minute just to thank the two committee members. Thank you very much for your service. Sometimes it's very thankless. I know Jill, you had a rough road the previous two years, but optimism is in the air, and everybody is looking forward to the turnaround. I think that the team concept is here. I think your leadership and your perseverance and strength that you brought to committee is going to be missed. And I hope that you're a phone call away, as you say, because we will be utilizing you and your experience, and maybe, as we say, the history in the past where we learned something, so we don't repeat the same mistakes. Thank you very much again for your years of service. Is there anything else by Members Forum? If not, moving on to adjournment, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Tell them.
For a second, motion in a second. All laws in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present?